Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Wethel Village. And I would ask the clerk to call the vote.
Rural Call, Mayor Brock.
Here, President.
Mayor Protim Garrett.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Present.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson.
Here.
And Councilmember Solis.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. But I want in the audience to join us in stating.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council has the agenda in front of them. Is there any suggested changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
Yes, oh, no, not the agenda, sorry. Confused.
If not, could we have a motion to approve the agenda as published?
So moved.
So moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. We have a number, or maybe a record number, of sets of minutes to approve this evening. The first one in the packet is for the special council meeting, which was held on May 23. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
None here.
None.
If not, we have a motion to approve them as distributed then. So moved and seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. The next are the minutes of the study session, which was held on June 19, 2017. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Yes. I was not here that day.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's got to be under absent.
Absent.
No, it says absent and none.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
She was just pointing it out.
I was just pointing it out.
All right. Any other additions or corrections?
No, sir.
And could we have a motion to adopt these minutes as corrected?
So moved.
If we're moved and seconded, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. The next are the minutes for the council meeting, the regular council meeting, which was held also on June 19. Pardon?
I was going to ask the same question.
We don't have a consent agenda known this time.
Are we done with that period?
We left it out of agreement with the city interim city administrator because the last several times we've pulled a number of items off of the consent agenda. I said, let's just leave it, act on all of them, and we'll just move through them as quickly as we can and still do that. So if you want to go back to using the consent agenda, we can do that in the future.
I like the consent agenda.
Okay.
But I don't know if everybody else did. We can always pull off if we want to discuss something.
Right. You always have that option.
Yeah. Okay.
So for tonight, though, it was published as being acting on a yoke, so.
All right.
The meeting of June 19. Are there any additions or corrections to that one?
No, sir.
Could we have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
If we're moved and seconded, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. The next is for a July 10 special city council meeting, which was held primarily to approve liquor licenses for our Food Truck Fridays programs. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I don't have any.
If not, could we have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
So moved and seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. And finally, do we have some dramatic music? On July 10 as well, the study session, which was held that same evening, those minutes are the final ones we're acting on. Is there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
None here.
If not, could we have a motion to approve them? They're moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. The next is the consideration and review of the dispersment reports, including the quarterly revenue and expense of investment reports. The first is for the period of June 1 through June 15, in amounts totaling $44,478.58. The second period is from June 16 through the 30 of 2017, in amounts totaling $717,426.58. Are there... Behind all that, of course, is the detail of all these expenditures and so on. So are there any... Well, first of all, could I have a motion to approve the dispersment report? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And now, is there any questions or statements about any of the items and the detail behind?
This is the last report that Mr. Potter will be on, or?
No.
No?
Probably not.
Oh, okay, so... No?
No. This is... The severance gets paid out over time.
Okay, so that was signed?
So that'll keep showing.
Oh.
No, that's why it's being paid out over time.
Okay, so we're going by the contract then?
Yes.
The original contract, so the severance will be... Why did we... I don't understand why we created it if he didn't have to sign it. We still had to adhere to the...
Because he was already under contract.
Right.
But the other part was that we never gave a due date for him to have that other... Did we give him a due date?
You were talking about the separation agreement that was presented to him?
Yeah.
Yeah, the conversations I've had with him, he has little to no interest in executing that document, and he'll just adhere to the terms of his contract that he signed with the city.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions on the dispersment report or comments?
Nope.
No, sir.
Page 43, there's the covering of the city's annual investment report.
Yep.
I wonder if I had a chance to read that.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
All right, hang on a second. I'm just having an issue.
We have a motion and seconded. What?
Hang on, I'm just having an issue navigating, because I have to keep rotating views here.
Oh, okay.
All right, we're at 43?
Yep.
It looks like it was positive, the investment.
Well, we changed there how we were handling our investments a number of years back, several years... It's long ago, and I thought, Pam, when I read your report.
I know.
Because if you look back in 2010, even 2011, wow, or even 2012, we only earned a little over $2,000 in our investments in that fiscal year. And now, our latest one is, what, the city earned $26,000. It's 2016, correct? And again, the city is limited. As you'll notice on page 43, Pam included in the report the types of instruments that we're allowed to, cities are allowed to, by law, invest in. And you'll think, you'll see very quickly, I think, that they are pretty safe investments. And therefore, the city is not entailing any real risk, so to speak, with these investments. And when you're not doing, willing to take risk, or you're not allowed to take risk by law, the returns are more modest by quite a bit, so.
That's impressive.
And most so, I think Pam's done a good job in that regard, getting this on track with better investments and so on. And we're a little later in your agenda, you've got approval, requested approval to allow her to continue to use the county investment fund, which has got a pretty decent rate of return compared to some of the other options that are available to us. And we've been using that for some now, haven't we?
Yes.
So... But they require us to annually say that we will continue.
No, I think the last time we did it was 2000.
Okay, so.
It's been like six years ago.
So six years ago. Well, they finally caught up with us again. So if there's no other questions or comments related to the dispersment reports, call for a vote. All those in favor of approving those reports, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Now we've reached that magic moment on the agenda. We opened the floor up to all of you sitting out there. For anybody who wishes to make it, you know, have an issue, you want to present to the council, or you have a question, you want to... This is your opportunity for items that are not on the agenda. Because when we come back to the agenda, why, if there's things that we need discussed, that's what we can. But again, yes, there's a handful. If you'd step to the podium and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Maureen Tardivi. Address is 19040 San Jose. And I wanted to address the issue of our street. For the umpteenth time, we've talked about this. I know in the past, we have a street that was supposed to have been a gravel street. And it's long... I've been here 20... No, I'm sorry, 17 years. This is prior to me moving in. It was supposed to be gravel. The city made a mistake and paved it. This, again, was before I moved in. Realized they made the mistake, and all they do is fill in potholes now. It's awful. Because it's not gravelled, it's not paved, it's whatever it is. We have now kids or grandkids on the street. They can't ride bikes. It's awful.
The street again is.
San Jose. And it's between Santa Barbara and Rackham. It's a very small little piece there. But it's been a problem for years. And I know in the past, I had come and actually I had, was told that the street would be taken care of, but they were going to just upgrade it to pave it, but that never happened. And that was, unfortunately, when Jeff Mueller was here. That was some time ago. So I want to know what we can do.
There's not always been a gravel street, is what you're trying to tell me.
It was... I've never seen it just gravel. This was prior to me moving in. Since then, all they've been doing, as they say, is putting a little tar, whatever it is, filling some holes, and just... It's awful. Awful.
But I don't recall that street ever being paved.
Well, that was, as I said, that's what I was told prior to us moving in, that they paved it by mistake. And so then they just let it deteriorate, and that's what's happened.
I don't think that's...
I don't think that's... There would have been a policy of the city, so.
But it's...
I do know that there are streets in town that are gravel.
Right.
And they were never paved.
Right.
Because they...
The homeowners didn't pay for it at that point.
The homeowners didn't want to pay a share of that, so they were...
I understand that.
You know, so...
But this is... It's not paved, and it's not gravel. It's a mixture. It's awful.
We live across the street from Maureen, so we can be sure that it's embarrassing.
It's terrible.
It's gravel with potholes, and every once a month or two in the summer, somebody will come through and fill one or two holes. But it's...
But part of it is...
You're super slow because your car bottoms out in certain parts.
Oh, yeah.
It's not good.
But parts of it, you can see, were paved at one time. You look at the edging, you'll see. You can see where it was paved.
I'm very familiar with the street.
I should have brought it.
I go down there frequently, and it is awful. I personally think all the gravel roads are awful.
Well, this is mostly gravel would be one thing. But it's not even mostly gravel. It's very chopped up.
Somebody comes by and fills in holes with... You'll get the hot tar.
The cold patch.
Yeah. And I think...
In midsummer, you'll get another fill-in.
And I think because it's not one of the, you know, the streets that gets, you know, a lot of traffic on, I think perhaps it is further down on the priority list.
But it's been there on the bottom of the priority list for 17 years.
Yeah.
Seventeen years I've been here. And my other neighbors on the other side of me was...
So it's time to give them a boost up the ladder.
Supposed to be coming tonight, too. And they said they've been here 23 years, I think she told me, because we walk every morning. And she said it's been like this the whole time while she's been here, too.
I'm sure it's probably true.
Yeah. Do we have... Don't we have a report on the roads that we are going to...
We do, and that's why I need to get that.
I heard it was El Dorado, because I did come and talk to...
Well, El Dorado is being done this summer, yes.
Yes, but I mean, this has been just terrible. And like I said, kids can't ride their bikes on it, cars bottom out all the time on it. It's awful.
Yeah. So we need to get the report.
Yeah. We'll have our engineers ask them to get that report and go look at why it's in the bottom, if it's even on there.
I have it written down.
So how can we...
Because I have a hunch none of the gravel roads are on it.
Do you need my phone number?
How do we get back to Ms. Maureen? So you'll...
My... Here, I can give you.
Just email us. Don't give your phone number.
I'm at the book.
Okay.
T-A-R-D-I-V-I.
No, I just wanted to make sure there was someone.
We'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard tonight?
Hi. Bruce Kanter, 18129 Sunnybrook, Letherton... Well, obviously, Letherton Village. Of course, I have it.
48076.
48076 dash 3432.
Get it all in there.
Yes, I think you all know I'm running for council in the fall, so I've been coming to these meetings as much as possible to learn as much, and so that if I'm honored enough to be elected, I can kind of hit the ground running. But then I thought, well, as long as I'm coming, I might as well bring up some of my issues rather than just sit there, so. One thing, and this will probably seem mundane relative to what's been going on the last few weeks, but...
Mundane to do, we can handle.
Yeah, mundane is probably good. But for me, one issue is the walkability of the city. And I think I've presented on this in years past before. I walk almost every day from 11 mile to 12 mile, and then back to 11 mile with my dogs. I think it's no secret that the sidewalks are not, have not historically been in the greatest of condition. And so about two years ago, I talked to the city administrator and asked what we could do about it, and was told that the problem was one of resources. We didn't have resources to go out and document the broken pieces of sidewalk and the, you know, cracked pieces, pieces that need to be replaced or repaired and so forth. So I actually went out and did it. I took pictures and put it on a CD, gave it to the city administrator.
I remember you doing that.
Yeah, and they... And we made some good progress. And after, I think a few of the really bad areas were repaired and replaced, and then it kind of stopped. And so I asked a few months later, or several months later, what had happened. And I was told they couldn't find the disc. And I didn't have copies of it anymore at that point. So fast forward to today, or six weeks ago, I had mentioned it to Andy, and he had said, again, it's a resource issue. So I went out about a month ago and redid it again. And I'd have given that to Sean, and kind of want to ask you guys to, you know, kind of urge the academics of the administrator.
Did you keep a copy?
I did. I did keep a copy this time.
Thank God someone had it.
But I'd urge them to kind of act on it. Use it to, you know, with the code enforcement gentleman, so that they can, you know, kind of get in touch with the property owners and get them to fix the blocks of concrete for the sidewalk. And then, related to that, or at least to the walkability, the other issue that I've been seeing a lot lately, I don't know, for lack of a better name, I call them parking blocks. Those six-foot-wide concrete pieces that stop the cars from moving forward. And I don't know what it is. Maybe there's been a lot of... Actually, I've seen some parking lot repair, but a lot of them, especially on the west side, are not anchored down anymore. So what happens is the cars hit them, they move a little bit, the cars hit them again, they move a little bit more.
Snow blows, knock them out.
Right. Well, this is, you know, in the non-snowtime as well. So there's actually gotten to the point where sometimes there's actually been some, like in front of the Mappy Clinic, there was one that's actually literally perpendicular to the sidewalk. So at night, you know, obviously, that could be quite a hazard. So I've contacted a lot of the property owners and had a little bit of success getting them to fix it. Where I haven't had success, I've had Sean, I've talked to Sean, and Sean has taken care of it a little bit. So I, one wanted to know if there was an ordinance regarding those parking blocks, and whether or not they need to be permanently affixed to the ground. And then, related to that, there's also some buildings that don't have those parking blocks. And I don't know if there's an ordinance requiring them, if it abuts up next to the sidewalk, but you can go on any given day and drive down Southfield, and you'll see that there are cars that are literally all the way across the sidewalk.
I do know that the downtown development authority board approved a request from Sean recently to have employ a small crew that will do things like that.
Right.
In other words, they will go down through there, and if it's out of place, they... That's their job then, to move it back in, you know, and this kind of, they can keep those hazards down. In answer to your question, though, about I'd have to double-check, we'd have to double-check, if there's a requirement they be anchored.
I believe it's part of the building code.
I think so, too.
Yeah. What about having to have them if they're at the parking space, abuts the sidewalk? So for example, the Odell Clinic, I think it's a chiropractic dentist... Well, not chiropractic dentist, but a chiropractor and a dentist.
Yeah.
And then, a little bit further down, you've got the...
Though a chiropractic dentist would be good.
Very useful.
A couple of them at one time, yeah.
But then there's another building a little further down, the Sodkin Complex and Physical Therapy. They're another one on that side.
They don't have any either.
They don't have any either, and it's always a car across the...
We can ask our code enforcement to check that.
Again, I think that's something that's covered under the building code, but I'll confirm that with our planners tomorrow night.
All right, good.
Yeah. So minor issues, but, you know, as we try to fill the empty storefronts, you know, anything we can do to make it more palatial business, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else wish to be heard this evening?
What is our...
I'm here to remove the sidewalks, though. I also walk 11 to 12 and back. Yeah, the sidewalks are bad. I walk, you can normally run Santa Barbara and Bloomfield, walk up and down those.
I actually busted my tire riding my bike.
Yeah, it's a problem.
The greatest thing was, the first time I made the video, it was actually a video instead of a photograph like this last one. While I was videoing it, there was a skateboarder who hit an open crack and went flying off of his skateboard onto the lawn and rolled, and, you know, screamed a couple of expletives, and I was like, this is perfect. It's almost as if I paid you to do this to prove my point, but, yeah.
But you didn't have a video of it.
No, I had a video of that. That was two years ago.
That was, that would have been dramatic fact.
And did you pay him?
No, I did not.
At least you could have done.
We probably did.
But we're really glad you made a copy, although we're not going to lose this one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate the comments from the audience. We'll follow up on those items. This evening, we have two public hearings advertised. These are for the zoning board of appeals. And the first, they're... Let's talk about the first one, some various requests for 19051 San Jose Boulevard. Who's introducing them?
I can talk about it. I think our...
Go ahead.
Zoning coordinator is Sean, maybe? I don't know. He's not here tonight, so. I believe, is there an applicant here for...
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So the applicants are here. This is actually a zoning variance request. They requested a total of three variances from two sections of the zoning ordinance as they pertain to the location of a proposed shed, as well as the overall square footage of the shed and the overall height of the shed. The applicant has submitted to council, sorry, to the ZVA an application. It's been properly noticed. They have included several pages of explanation as to why they feel their variances are warranted. And I believe they're able to answer any questions this evening that the ZVA may have as it pertains to the variance request. I'll just remind, although we're not really convened as a ZVA, but the standards that the ZVA will use to determine whether or not the variances should be granted are outlined in Article 7, Section 7.7 of the zoning ordinance. Without any further questions, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Maybe you can give us a brief description of what it is you wanted to do, and then we'll see if there's any body from the public wishes to be heard on the request.
Sure. Simply put, we're trying to create a shed in the backyard that's a little bit...
What's her name again?
Sorry, David Moog, Paulette Moog.
Moeg.
Moeg, 19051 San Jose.
In Lake of Village.
Michigan, United States. So the shed's a little bit taller, a little bit wider, and not in the designated spot, which is supposed to be in the back section of the lawn. We have a flooding issue, which you can see on page two. That's why we can't... We need to also put down a rat wall and a pour-a-foundation. So we don't want to put it into the back of the... Where it's all flooding in the back, because they'll eventually sink. And then the size is because we have two large automobiles. We have a lot of, you know, chainsaws.
We can't use our garage, so hopefully we can put everything...
Got chainsaws, lawnmower, bicycles, all that type of stuff, and can't fit two cars in there with that in there. And then wood.
I don't have any of that, and I can't fit my cars in my garage, either.
You need to apply for a variance for a tough shit.
Mine is, is I've got too many kids with stuff.
But it has nothing to do with the home next door, it's not...
Nope. The only person who can actually see it is sitting right there, and if she has a problem, we know where you live.
So the variance requests are what?
It's a...
The location?
It's the location.
Location, which is close.
It's on the west side of the property, and it needs to be in the... Needs to be in the south side of the property, according to the ordinance.
The ordinance, it's 3.7.2. I.D. Requires that the shed, accessory building, be located entirely in the rear yard, behind the rear property line. As you can see from the...
There's a map.
Yeah, the map that's...
And we're a weird property.
A very small portion of it is located in the side yard, which requires the variance from that section.
And we're a weird property. We're all the yards that join us are rear yards of our neighbors. So it's, there's no...
Well, it is interesting, yeah.
Yeah.
So we look at a lot of sheds.
So you're going to move it up?
We're moving it to the west.
To the west. Okay, just from the flood, okay.
Yeah, just a couple of questions.
Sure. It wants to go back here.
Okay.
You're not just using it for tooling, you're using it for...
It's also going to be for... I also do some minor, you know, woodworking around the house and stuff like that building.
So the ordinance, I mean, does it still fall under that? I mean, you still need a variance for that? Because they're going to be technically using it as a, you know, like a woodworking piece of...
Yeah, I don't believe they intend to operate a business out of it.
No, no, no business. I'm just saying, you know, typically, a shed is used as a shed, you know, storing tools, storing whatever, but would you need a variance if you're going to be utilizing it?
No, I mean, he could use it for storage, or are you saying, are you suggesting if he does work inside the shed?
Yeah.
Like, just hobby type?
Yeah.
Cutting wood.
Yeah, no, there's no... There's no, would be no required variance for that.
Okay. Okay, just the last question.
Sure.
I'm assuming you saw the piece on Channel 7 last week about this tough shed.
No.
You didn't see that?
Oh, I didn't get to tell you.
No, it's a good thing because...
They've been catching fire all around town.
So, Channel 7 did a piece on, yeah. No, they did a piece on individuals such as yourself using the tough shed as an alternative where it's extending their house. And it was, it looked great.
So, you can make it a tiny house.
It looked great, yeah.
So, I've been telling my parents this.
Right.
You got a place for that.
There's where you're moving.
Right. So, this is just a coincidence, but, yeah.
No, they say you could drywall it.
Right, exactly.
We're going to electrify it.
Yes.
Do everything to it and live in it.
Electrify it.
Yeah, it's insulated, you can do anything you want in there, actually.
We're not going to put it there, but you can.
Well, you gotta put your parents back there with no plumbing.
Sounds almost like you hate it.
Don't be fine with it for now, how soon as it's... Don't go to Maureen's house.
They're going there for...
Yeah. We may see more of these tough sheds. There's another lawsuit coming this week.
If you go to their lot in Royal Oak, it's amazing, the different things they have with them.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, you're building it.
No.
No, it's just since being delivered.
You're a builder. He's a builder.
Whoa, 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 whoa. No, no, no.
You said you keep...
Small stuff, small stuff, small stuff.
He built me planters.
I need to talk to you about planters.
Let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Have you heard what it's all about now? Is there anybody, will, the public hearing, is there anyone here wishes to express support or concern or ask questions or, while the applicant is still here?
We're good.
Hearing that, we will close this portion of the public hearing and we will come back to it for the purpose of action in just a little short time when we reconvene as the actual zoning board of appeals. It's one of these subjects where the council gets to act as judge and jury.
Is that tonight also, though?
That's, oh, yes. It'll be, it'll be just a little bit later. I'm sorry to keep you, but that's what, it's the way it works. Second one, we have a second one that's also held for public hearing.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. The applicant at 18505 West 12 Mile, ironically enough, is requesting a variance for a tough shed. That applicant is requesting, again, three variances in total. One dealing with the total square footage maximum, another one dealing with the maximum height. And this one deals with a minimum side yard setback as they're requesting that it be placed on the property line.
Somehow, I don't see the backup for that.
Well, that brings me to my next point. I have received information that the applicant from 18505 West 12 Mile has requested that this matter be tabled so that they could provide additional information with respect to support their variance request. So, that's...
Now, so, this is one I think you can agree to.
South Oakland Shelter, so...
This has been going on for a while with...
To table.
So, at this point, that they're requesting no action. The public hearing was scheduled, it can be conducted this evening. I don't believe, I see the applicant here this evening. But council can conduct the public hearing and then the request, the action request item for the ZBA can remain tabled.
Is there anyone here that wants to speak to that particular item?
Look right behind that shelter there.
Okay.
And I'm just curious where they were planning on putting it? Was it going right up against the retaining wall, the brick wall? Because their parking lot, I mean, their parking lot to the top is only five foot.
Yeah.
And my yard is maybe six foot, so it's going to be like four foot over the wall.
I think that, I mean, I, again, speaking just, I'm, they've been before planning commission a couple of times and Maria probably can speak to it more appropriately as our liaison.
Is it tomorrow night is planning commission?
I don't believe so.
Yeah. There's been a number of times that they've gone back to the drawing board because...
I just assumed table the thing, including the public hearing portion until...
Yeah.
They've got the materials for us to see and for the public to see as well. Okay?
All right, so, we're going to table that one.
We would need a motion to table this item until our next meeting.
I make a motion that we table this item regarding 18505 West 12 Mile till the next meeting.
Second.
That moved to second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on then, we will go to our, oh, we're going to get rid of this whole thing right now.
Yeah.
The city council is now scheduled to reconvene, to convene as the zoning board of appeals to consider items, it says, but it's, so we're going to consider item. So, if we could have a motion to recess the council meeting and allow us to reconvene as the zoning board of appeals.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. We are, we're called to order the zoning board of appeals meeting. There is a set of minutes in your packet from the zoning board of appeals for their meeting of September 26, 2016. Is that right? It's that long ago?
It's been a while.
They've had life too easy.
What page is that?
It is 45.
I went too far.
Yes, yeah.
So, again, we would need a, are there any additions or corrections to these minutes?
No, this is mine.
If not, could we have a motion to approve the minutes of the ZBA?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded. All those in favors indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries. The next, the item that we have before us, it's a question of approving or denying the zoning variance requests for 19051 San Jose Boulevard. Does the...
Will I make a motion?
Well...
Is it this one? It's San Jose, right?
Right. One of, first, yeah, right.
To approve it, right?
To approve or deny it, depending on what you're wanting to make the motion. Is there any advice the city attorney has for this?
Yeah, I would, again, as I indicated when I introduced this item at the public hearing section, I would ask that council, in making their motion, review the criteria laid out in Section 7.7 of the zoning ordinance, the standards set forth in support of a motion to approve, should that be the pleasure of the ZBA.
And what is, what are those points?
They're outlined on the, if you want, I could read them to you. They're, they are outlined on page 49. It's part of the ZBA application.
Ah, yes, so they are.
49.
Well, it's not on the electronic 49, is it?
It's on the electronic page 52.
Thank you. There it is. The written 49, though.
Yeah.
So, it speaks of a particular hardship. What is the hardship?
Well, I believe they discussed the flooding.
The water, the location.
Because we made the mistake of putting ours in the back and we can't get to it in the spring because it's so much water. So, they'd never be able to get to it in the spring.
Pontoons, maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
Float it up there.
We have a lot of docks and stuff, you know.
Is that a hardship that we can, we can consider that one?
And that would be a hardship or a practical difficulty based on the physical, topographical conditions of the specific property.
Would it be C or A?
I believe that would fit under A.
Yeah, A is what they're looking at.
Oh, and it's not been created by...
And C, I guess, too.
It fits.
That would be D.
D also.
E also.
And E.
It won't pose deviation in public health. So, do you have to have, you don't have to have all of them?
Well, ideally, the more factors, the better.
Okay.
Again, and this is just because in the future, you may have other variance requests that may not, you may not have objection from the neighboring properties, which in this case, it sounds like nobody is in opposition to this proposal.
And item F, there seems to be no detriment to the neighboring property owners.
Right, so, we got C, D, E.
It's good practice to always go through and outline and identify how the request either meets or fails to meet all of the criteria.
So, you got, what, B, C, D, E, F is good?
Yeah.
G.
G.
What are the additional amenities that you're, you're not really proposing anything additional?
No, I might run electrics to it eventually, but...
Yeah, but that's...
Yeah.
So, I don't think that was applicable, actually.
What, which one? The G?
No, and an example of that, say, for example, there was an issue with the height. A neighbor had objected to the height. They were concerned with looking at this and the applicant had indicated they were to build a taller privacy fence or plant some screening that would...
Enhance the neighbor's property also.
Yeah, so, that would be a condition, an amendment going beyond what's minimally required.
But that's not called for here and that's not anything they're proposing.
Although, unless Maureen wants a privacy fence?
We already have a privacy fence and it's high.
It's already done.
I don't know, you can hold out for something else, Maureen. What are you looking for?
I can have a millimeter boat so I can get to mine.
So...
Who is this?
So, you want some kind of water taxi service?
I do want to get to mine in the spring.
So, H is good, too, right? H is good.
Yeah.
And then, any special criteria listed for a specific deviation elsewhere.
I think those, those were several.
So, an I is good, yeah?
All right, your motion, ma'am?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the zoning variance request for 19051 San Jose Boulevard.
Second.
Do we need to expressly...
Based on the points.
Based on, based on the points on the application.
Yes.
You went through it cited, okay?
Based on the points cited in 7.7 of...
The clerk and the city attorney will remember this.
Based on the points cited in 7.7 of the zoning ordinance.
Good for you. Good job.
Second.
All right. So, we'll move to seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion carries. You are...
Thank you.
Approved.
You're welcome.
The, now, we took, we did a motion to...
We tabled the public hearing.
Tabled the last one, but that was, so we tabled the public hearing.
Correct. We would also...
Do we have to do another, is it tabling motion for the ZBA?
That's correct.
All right.
Okay.
Is there a motion to table item D for 18505 West 12 Mile Road to our next ZBA meeting?
So moved. Second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? The motion carries. All right. Could we have a motion to adjourn the ZBA meeting and return the city council to their meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? The motion carries. And we will call the city council meeting back to order and continue with our agenda of action items. Item nine in the, whatever this is called, the agenda. Item A, the city council will consider the appointment of representatives to the SACWA and SACRA boards.
So, a discussion?
There is a, item 9A, there's a suggested motion. Pam here is recommending that we name Ken Martin as our representative to the SACWA and SACRA boards and that Aaron Carlton serve as the alternate for those boards. This is something we do every year.
Well, I'll make the motion to appoint Ken Martin rep and Aaron Carlton as alternative to SACRA and SACWA.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. Who was the board member before? Board members?
Ken is right now, the representative, and Aaron is the alternate for the SACWA, and I think Sean was the alternate for the SACWA.
Just as an extension. I have a question. It's really basic, I probably should, what's the difference between SACRA and SACWA?
SACWA is the South Oakland County Resource Recovery, so, picking up on your trash, the recycling program, all of that falls under that.
Recycling, okay.
The SACWA is the South Oakland County Water Authority, which is where we draw our water from and...
Got it, okay.
They handle, this is sewer as well.
Yeah, they do.
So, it's, they have their different areas of responsibilities and they're two separate groups and two separate boards.
SACWA can take all your paperwork and just dump it on this conveyor belt and they'll stretch for you.
Thank you.
Bye.
There's a motion?
Yeah.
Was it seconded?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? The motion carries. Next, another subject near and dear to all of our hearts is the approval of bids for the 2017 paving project. Pam?
Yes, mayor and council. The bids were received on July 11 at 2:00 PM. They were opened publicly and read aloud. We had four bids were received ranging between a low bid of $197,361 to $282,161. I am asking council to approve the low bid of Proline Asphalt, who has been doing our paving projects for the last few years, and we have not had a problem with them doing those.
This is an asphalt road, is that correct? It's going to be, I know their company name is asphalt, but, so, they've done all of the roads and, do they, they've done all the roads in Lathrop for...
No, they just have been the low bid for the last few years.
They've been the low bid for the last several years.
One nine seven three sixty-one?
Yep.
That house spelled out in the letter.
Does that include San Jose?
The low bid was submitted by Proline.
The way it is spelled out, spelled out in the letter is like they have done work for us.
They have.
They have.
They have done work for the last few years.
But they're, I'm just saying they're not the only one, that was the question, the answer.
Oh, okay.
There have been other forms that have been successful in the past, but for the last several years, they have been the low bid.
They have come in the low bid.
So what happens with this asphalt when they put it down, which I, which I'm really happy to see it happening, but is there some type of, um, and I ask this all the time, is there some type of guarantee, warranty, you know, you got a year, two years? You crack, they come back?
I think Lathrop had, Lathrop Boulevard had, uh, two years, I believe, they would come back the second, the second year and fill the crack, cracks?
So it did crack in two years?
It better not.
Yeah, it did crack, and they came back and they serviced the road.
Typically, typically roads don't come with warranties, uh, because a lot of it's dependent on maintenance of the road after, and a lot of times environmental factors that are outside the control of the parties. We have not received a contract yet that's been submitted on this, to my knowledge. So once that's in, we'll look and address that, but again, typically, road, road requirements don't, don't come with any form of a guarantee.
Well, Ian just said that, Councilman Ferguson just said that there was a two-year, my concern is, and I'm really happy, I'm really, uh, glad that this is happening, but I wanna make sure we're choosing, I know they have the lowest bid, but the product is the product, is.
Well, they had the bid based on specifications that meets their requirements.
And our engineer looked at it.
Correct.
The engineers developed the criteria for the bids.
Okay.
Yeah.
I do that.
Thank word. Satisfied with that.
So this isn't the contract, um?
No, this is just the, to authorize the letting of the contract to this particular bidder.
Okay, so, um, as councilman.
The city attorney must review the contract before any of us sign it.
Okay.
In order to make sure we're covered.
Mister city attorney, I, um, Councilman Ferguson mentioned that, uh, we had some type of agreement for the other roads, that they would come back and fix it if it was a certain amount of time. I know you said that typically it doesn't happen, but I don't want you to just throw it out the window because of what's typical.
No, we'll, we'll look at it, but typically, again, typically, if you're gonna require a request that a warranty be part of a, uh, project, it, uh, normally would be put in the bid document that goes out because they're going to be, there's going to be some additional cost with the bidder, so. It doesn't look, just looking at the, the bid requirement, the description from Giffords Webster, our engineer, doesn't look like there's any warranty component of the bid.
Yeah, but how much is, if it's, if it's, if you say that in your negotiation, I mean, can you just try to negotiate?
We can't really negotiate, well, we can't really negotiate once we approve a bid, so.
I used to wonder, it's, we always negotiated the final, so it's not, it's not like that here, you don't negotiate the final.
Once, once the RFP goes out, it has to be included, because then it's, it's an unfair, uh, to the other applicants, perhaps there's.
After I wanna be, we always negotiate it, so maybe it's different here.
Well, it's, it's, maybe you shouldn't have negotiated again.
No, 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 we didn't.
An RFP is, is a very set, specific circumstances of what, what the bid is requesting, so perhaps, uh, the second bidder, um, asphalt specialist, maybe their bid of two hundred and three thousand included a warranty in their work, but if you were to negotiate with Proline and, uh, maybe that now puts, if you wanted a two-year warranty, they're gonna say, all right, well, we'll do it, but it's gonna be two hundred and seven thousand.
I understand what you're saying.
Now, you've changed the parameters of the bid.
I don't think any of them put anything in there.
No, I don't think so, but just by way of example, but.
Didn't require.
You didn't give those other, other bidders an opportunity.
So you can't even ask him?
No, one, uh, no, once, your, your negotiation and an RFP is what you put in the RFP, and then when you get it back, that's, that's what they're.
Well, I guess the real question, have, have we had issues in the past that, you know, maybe sometime in the future, we ought to consider that, and, you know?
You have a lot of issues.
Lathrop Boulevard had cracks two years later.
Well, because it, was it a, was it a problem?
Yeah.
Did they come and fix it?
Yes, under warranty.
Then it wasn't a problem.
Under warranty, it was under warranty.
He says it's under warranty.
I'm not aware of that, but.
You don't have to take my word for it, Nancy's an audience, she lives off Lathrop Boulevard, too.
Was it the company or was it a crack seal company, 'cause we had crack sealing done, which was a totally separate company.
The city does, yeah, they do contract with a different company to, to go out and seal those cracks and fix those cracks, it may not have been, if it was Proline or whoever, it may not have been the same company coming back to fix it.
Was there a warranty that you were?
Not that I know of.
I don't know.
We complained about how the road did not hold up, even over the winter, especially at the edges.
Right.
And the company came back and repaved strips because it just should've held up a lot longer than that we felt, and they came back with issues.
Sure.
This is when that was here.
Okay.
Now, is that considered a warranty with, coming back?
If it's not in the contract, it's not.
Coming back to redo it?
So why repeat something, I mean, why don't we do something that allows us to be guaranteed that it's fixed, why would we repeat? If we know that, uh, one of our streets, um, something happened with the same company in one of the streets.
If there's no requirement in the bid documents, the, uh, RFP, uh, for a guarantee, then I think the only alternative here is to reject all the bids and rebid it.
That, that would be, if, if council would, would, and again, I would defer to the engineers on this, uh, and how the specifics you would frame the bid proposal, but yeah, if that, if that's the situation, then the appropriate action would be.
And if they came back and did some repair on Lathrop Boulevard, I mean, not necessarily Proline, but whoever it was, uh, our engineers would have known, would know under what circumstances that it occurred.
Should have, do you know approximately what year that was?
Yeah, five, it was five.
Was it Proline that did the work, or was it another company, that's the other thing?
Or the councilperson at the time.
I don't know that it really matters, I mean, the, the engineers should know.
Yeah, they should.
Under what circumstances that is renewed.
Because it, it was a big repatch project, and it went past Nancy's house and my house, so. It's gotta be in there.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out what the problem was, there was a problem, they came and fixed it. I mean, have, have there been?
But if they don't feel like it.
But, but have there been other problems that haven't been fixed, that we thought were the responsibility of the paving company?
So the price is gonna go up, 'cause according to the Michigan Infrastructure and Transportation Association, and this Public Act of seventy-nine, nineteen ninety-seven, there is going to be, uh, God, I just lost it.
Right, if we're gonna be asking for a request for.
Warranty is going to be, um, typically about ten thousand dollars extra.
Even MDOT has not had those kind of things required, and MDOT.
I don't know what that's, but I don't know what, so.
And how long?
MDOT has just recently decided the right to do it.
But that's not, we don't know what the distance is, and then when it comes to RFPs that are sealed, you have the, um, the requirements that everybody has to meet, and I don't, I mean, personally, when I've done RFPs, it wouldn't be fair for someone to say, okay, um, I'm gonna give it to you for the low cost, but you didn't give all of the exact things that you're asking for in the RFP, you hear what I'm saying? So we, we either scrap, which, this is my thoughts on me doing contracts before, scrap everything, and then you have to start it all over and do a RFP, including a warranty, with and without a warranty.
I understand that, so, so, but, what, a question to you, how did your street, how does, how does the street wear now on Lathrop Boulevard?
Yeah, really good.
It's good? Okay, um.
And most of the streets we've paved over the last several years are holding up very well.
Okay, um.
Hasn't snowed that much, but yeah.
Yeah, that's only one of the factors.
But yeah, I, I'm just.
One of the fa, one of the big factors in this town is the high water table.
You're right.
It really does.
Exactly, yeah, no.
I guess when you're a victim of this, 'cause it, 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 it bothers me, but if, if all of you all are, are okay with it, and if our attorney says that there's nothing we can do, at this point, let's go along.
There's something, there's.
You can scrap the RFP.
You can scrap all of them and start over again.
The only concern that I have, and I, I can't confirm it, but the timing of this may preclude them from getting the work done this year. So if, if you have to go through, you have to rewrite a bid, you have to solicit bids, it's open for a period of time.
Right.
It would then go through the process again, so I, I, these were, I don't remember when this was sent out, Pam wrote.
I don't have a problem. If she says the road is, is okay, her road is okay.
You know when the RFP went out?
No, I did not, I don't think Sat put in his either.
That was before your time.
I think it was.
Way before, I think it was.
Oh, actually, no, it wasn't.
The bids were received on July eleventh.
I think it went out in June, because I had to get on the, um, the website for him, so he could put the bid specs out there.
I'm good.
Yeah.
You can vote on it.
Happened to be probably right after the last city manager was here.
If you could, you could do some checking with the engineers in terms of whether they, what assurances they've got to make sure that these specs are gonna hold up.
And I think you could, uh, Mayor Protem indicated that, uh, in the future, have the bid structured so that there's two requested prices, one with, one without warranty. Uh, just mention that to Scott Ringler.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, there, there is, has a motion been made?
Is this pending, uh, the engineers' review? Is it pending the engineer, the engineers' review?
Legal and engineering review.
Yeah, well, there would be a, the contract would come back, it would be a separate, uh, agenda item for approval of the actual contract, this is just to, all that's being requested tonight is to approve and award the, the bid to Proline.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, so we move the second to approve the bid for Proline, uh, any other discussion?
I'd just add that, that not to exceed one hundred and ninety-seven thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Right.
And authorizing the mayor to sign.
Yep.
Well, no.
Well, well, you.
No, you're, you're not, I think you're asking that the contract come back before council, or.
Either or.
You can authorize.
Either or.
Well, and just the, the proposed motion indicates authorizing the mayor, are we not doing that, and we're asking it to come back?
Either or, not to exceed one ninety-seven.
The pleasure is all yours.
Three sixty-one.
The maker of the motion?
No, it's, it's gonna, we said that it was gonna come back to council, that's what we said.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, the fun ones, the city council will consider a motion to purchase a new police vehicle. We've been on a, the city has had a little karma problem lately with our police vehicles, so, Pam, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor and council, last Sunday, actually Monday morning about three A M., one of our officers was southbound on, um, Southfield Road, heading over southbound by Kebab Kebab, and there was a drunk driver heading northbound in the southbound lanes, hit our, um, our officer veered off to miss him, he came at our officer, our officer went back the other way, he veered back the other way, hit our officer head on. Our Tahoe has been totaled by our insurance company, our officer is okay, he actually is back to work today, he's got his clearance to come back. So our Tahoe has been totaled, and I would like to ask council to replace that, um, Tahoe. We would be using the equipment that's inside the Tahoe already, that they have already taken to the place to have it stripped down, so that if we do get a new one, it could be put into the new vehicle. So the equipment's fine, it was just the vehicle, and it was the frame on the vehicle that made the decision that they needed to total the vehicle.
Yep.
Well, what about it, does it have insurance, do we have insurance?
They're gonna be paying, the insurance company will be paying us for the majority of it, but we still need that, of that vehicle, 'cause right now we're down two vehicles.
Okay.
We only have two vehicles right now.
Here's my question, if the insurance is gonna pay for a portion, a portion of it, so is the new vehicle cost, the new vehicle cost, uh.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars, do we really approve thirty-five thousand when there's a portion that's gonna be coming back from insurance, or is that just?
Well, the money would go towards the vehicle, but you still have to approve the, the price of the vehicle for the full price.
Yeah, there may be, I don't know exactly the, the state of the claim, but there may be some time before the claim is paid out as well, and it sounds like the time is of the essence in replacing the vehicle, so.
So then when the money comes back, it goes where?
It will go back into the, it will go back into an insurance reimbursement account, which will be, um, budget, and then that will be done to put it back into an account that it would be taken out of for capital improvement.
Maybe I'm just not catching it, my car got in a car accident, and it was totaled, I don't pay the full amount that they, they take the, or maybe I'm just.
Well, what I'm asking for is the, the vehicle amount is thirty-four thousand dollars, that is the cost of the, of the thirty-five.
Is that why I'm saying not to exceed?
Right, thirty-five, because I don't know if there's gonna be any incidents or anything that they have, but even with the insurance paying for it, we might not pay the whole thirty-five thousand, but we have to have the contractor, or the car, so they can go and order the vehicle, 'cause it does take a while for the Tahos to come in, and it could be October before they get this vehicle.
And when you hear things three times, it stays.
I hear you. So you would get this vehicle?
I think you're not the only one that has that.
You'd get this vehicle from the same location as the, the most recent one?
Hearing it three times.
You know, we have a newer.
Well, we went through, we went through M D Ls with the vehicle, and it would, it would be, they were the lowest, yes, they were the lowest bid.
It would go through there. Okay.
It's a state bid.
State.
State.
I'm sorry.
We use the state bid for the vehicles.
Okay, well, um, well, are we ready to do this?
What's the, what's the lead time for the replacement, like if we, if we approve it tonight, can you get it in three weeks, or?
No, it would be about October.
Wow.
We do have one coming in that you did approve already.
Yeah, yeah.
But this would be the one that would replace the one that was totaled.
Was the, was that the newest one that got totaled?
Hmm, no, it was the second one.
Okay.
It only had thirty-some thousand miles on it.
Wow. Wow, okay. All right.
And the, the perpetrator walked away, I understand?
No, actually, well, people.
Or staggered away.
He walked away to look at the back of his car to see who rear-ended him.
Yes.
So he wasn't, wow.
Tells you a little bit about his state of mind.
Wow.
Unbelievable.
Yes.
Okay, did you make a motion?
I did not.
You did not?
Would you like me to?
Please.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of a new police vehicle for a cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Move and seconded, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, the motion carries. The next we have, as long as we're talking about vehicles, Pam?
Yes, mayor and council.
Recommendation for a detective's vehicle.
The detective vehicle, you had approved one back in May for the detective to get a car, that was, there was some miscommunication about that vehicle, and, uh, they lost their bid price, so they are coming back with the new bid price, it's about three hundred dollars more than last bid price, they are asking that this contract be, or this bid be approved for their, a detective car.
What was the reason why we didn't secure the first bid?
Miscommunication, um, I put in my letter, I'm sorry, with the, um, the last city administrator.
Okay.
So it's three, it just increased three hundred more because of the miscommunication, okay.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. So, can I make a motion?
You may.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the purchase of a new police vehicle for a cost not to exceed twenty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Second.
So move the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed, the motion carries. Next is item E, we will consider most approve a contract with the city of Southfield for fire services. This is a contract that we had, enter into or renew every couple of years with the city of Southfield. Uh, we've had a long and, uh, mutually beneficial arrangement with them for fire protection services, which includes the life support services that many, many in our community have had to avail themselves over the years. The contract, uh, terms we negotiated with, uh, the city of Southfield is that there would be no increase of the, in the contract cost for year number one. Year number two, there would be a one percent increase in the cost to the city of Lathrop Village, so, uh, all in all, and, and I believe, Pam, maybe you can help me with this, but, we've held this annual cost for several years now, the city of Southfield has been pretty good, but we all went through the same economic turmoil a few years ago, and they basically were, you know, held us, you know, in a position where we did not, uh, they didn't try to extort bigger fees out of us, and this kind of thing, so, it's a very mutual beneficial arrangement, it, they spread their costs over a bigger population base by having a contract with us. We, in turn, couldn't begin to duplicate these kind of services for the amount of money we're paying, so, it's, that's what I meant by it's a mutual benefit, and I think, uh, I know my household has utilized their, uh, life support services several times, and you, you, they are absolutely golden in terms of their service, their speed of response, and the quality of people they have on those rigs is outstanding, so. What is your pleasure, council?
Uh, I make a motion to approve the attached contract for fire services with the city of Southfield and authorize the mayor interim city administrator and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
The move and seconded, uh, just one question, city attorney, have you reviewed these contracts?
Yeah, I have, they're, they're separate, I did review, I had, uh, with respect to the next agenda item, I did make some suggestions, which we can discuss that one, but.
Okay, that's on the police dispatch?
Yeah, I didn't have any issues with, with the fire contract.
So I just wanted to, it on the record that the city attorney had reviewed the contract, all right. So is there any other discussion on the contract? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the mayor, same sign. Next we'll move, uh, motion carries, excuse me, action request nine F, is the consideration of approval of a contract with city of Southfield for dispatch services. Uh, does this have the same financial?
Yes, it does.
So it's a zero and a one percent for the two years?
Correct, yeah.
And, uh, is there anything you'd add to that, Pam?
Excuse me, sir?
Do you have anything to add to that?
No, it's the same.
City, I'll ask the city attorney then if he would, uh, you said you reviewed the contract, and they were recommending certain changes?
No, no changes, but I just wanted to confirm with the acting police chief that all, there are a series of check-offs and requirements that the officers are requested to do at the beginning of each shift, and I just wanted to make sure that those were still consistent with what, what is being done, so I hadn't heard back, I just.
Yes, they are, I talked to the interim police chief about it.
And I have no further everything else to say, I just wanted to make sure we weren't agreeing to do something that maybe we weren't doing anymore.
We weren't doing anymore, huh? Well, if there are good things to do, we better still be doing it, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, all right. Council, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve the attached contract for dispatch services for the city of Southfield and, and authorize the mayor interim city administrator and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Next is, we are asked by the Michigan Municipal League each year, uh, to consider a slate of candidates, in this case, it's for the Michigan Municipal League. in this case, it's for the Michigan Municipal League Workers Compensation Fund Board of Directors. We are members of the fund, in fact, I'm the chairman of this committee this year for the Michigan Municipal League, so, I would recommend that we affirm the nominations that have been provided and cast ballot accordingly.
How come nobody's from Lathrow? Oh, you, I don't see you on here.
Well, I am not up for reelection. I'm already a member.
You're already a member, so these are, how many members are total on the...
Uh, there's, I don't remember now, I think it's something like fifteen, sixteen people total on the board.
Okay, all right, so these are just...
And they try to, they try to structure the members of the board to be balanced between elected officials and administrative officials of the various cities, or villages, or municipalities, and also, they try to spread the representation across the state somewhat, and representing both big and low, small cities, et cetera. So that's kind of the, some of the discussions we have every year on that board as to new candidates to become on board, or the reelection of existing candidates.
So every city votes on this?
Yes.
What if one city says no, and...
They're outvoted.
So they outvoted, okay.
They're outvoted, yes.
Interesting. Okay, so...
There is a suggested motion, so...
I'll make a motion to affirm the nominations as provided by the MML Workers Compensation Board and authorize the city clerk to notify the MML before August eleven, twenty seventeen.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Move and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Next, we will consider a motion to accept an engagement letter for professional services with Plant Moran for audit services. Pam?
Yes, Mayor and Council, every year, we are asked to sign an engagement letter with our auditing firm before our audit starts, and our audit is gonna be August fourteenth this year, and they have asked that we sign the agreement letter, or the engagement letter for their professional services.
The fee is estimated to be approximately thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred?
I don't see that.
Yes. Second page.
So on page ninety-one, I think.
Ah, that's right here. Oh, my turn to page ninety-four.
Ninety-four. Ninety-four? Oh, no, it's, for us, it's ninety-one.
Well, I'm, I'm doing electronic place, so it's ninety-four. Pam, there was some discussion about them doing, providing some services in addition to the auditing?
Correct.
Is, is that something separate?
That is separate.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Can you confirm how it's separate? Because I thought that's what this was.
This is strictly for the audit services.
This is for their services of going through our books, our records, and making sure everything's okay and that. The other is that they're gonna come in and they are gonna help with preparing for the audit, which, there's certain things that they're not gonna be able to help prepare for, because with them auditing, auditing them, they cannot do certain aspects of helping.
You're restricted, are you restricted to either one, or you have to assist with both? You have to help, you have to assist with both requirements, as far as you do?
Yes.
Okay, so you're not restricted?
No.
You're, okay.
Nope.
I'll make the motion to allow the interim city administrator to enter into this agreement with Plant Moran for upcoming audit for fiscal year sixteen, seventeen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
You have a question?
Question?
What was the fee last year? Are they increasing it a lot?
No.
I'm gonna say, if they're increasing it, it would be two percent.
Have we used them...
They have been our auditors for twenty-plus years.
Yeah. However, I've been on the council long enough, I remember we used to use someone else years ago.
Don't forget, it has to be what's...
And it's been a lot better this way, I could say.
Has to be what's in here, because you can't negotiate, so...
No, that's right.
I'm reading, everybody negotiates.
Well, that wasn't an, that wasn't an RFP, though.
Yeah.
I'm reading, okay, we'll talk after.
Do you ever go out for three bids for this? I mean, they've been twenty, twenty-five plus years, have we ever thought about getting three bids to compare what's out there?
I thought that's what we had a conversation about in one of our, um, study sessions.
Yeah, we, we always said that...
But I think that that was, was that for the audit, or was that for the services to help get prepared for the audit?
Well, I think we did talk about this, there, I, Pam, is there a wealth of, of companies who do this type of auditing for municipalities?
There's not a wealth, but there are other companies that do do auditing services, yes.
And all of them are, are really pretty much the big, you know, three, so to speak.
You can have, you can have littler firms that do it, there are littler firms that do it.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to see, have a gut check, you know what I mean?
We did, because we talked about Kelly Services.
And I know this is their sweet, this is one of the main things they do.
Exactly.
Sure, yeah.
Yep, sure, yep.
They do a great job, but there's other firms that do it as well, so I'm just curious as to, other firms might be more competitive in terms of their fee quote, this kind of thing, just to think about maybe for next time.
Yeah, I mean, looking at the variables.
No, we have not.
Yeah, so when is this, this contract is...
August fourteenth, they will be out for the audit.
Right now, yeah.
Okay.
The fee last year in the, was thirty-six, six fifty is what they proposed.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Yeah, I noticed in the, in the letter, it just says, our current hourly rate, without telling us what the current hourly rate is.
Thirty-six, six fifty was last year.
So they only went up a thousand, thirteen hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But that is interesting to...
We still should have three quotes, but I'm not gonna shoot anybody in the foot today.
It has been a long time, so it would not hurt to invite, put out a request for proposals for the following year.
That was the other, that I said it was too quick to, but time.
Okay, so this is for sixteen, it's over next year, so then the following year, we can, we can start a bid process for three.
Yeah, it's no problem, I wouldn't, I wouldn't reject it.
This is for the fiscal year that's just ended.
I got it.
Not sure they're...
I got it. Okay, so, I'm gonna, can I make a motion to allow the interim city administrator to enter?
There's already been a motion made.
Been a motion.
Oh, was it? Okay.
And seconded.
So any other discussion?
Yeah, we made it, Ian seconded.
Okay, you were right.
All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. While we're at it, the Plant Moran folks, we have been formed, have a, well, there's a new area that the state is requiring us to audit, that has never been part of our process before, so it's a new requirement, a requirement of the, for an audit of the Act fifty-one funds, performance of, the performance audit on those funds. This is the money that we receive back from the state of Michigan that's collected for gasoline tax and other fees and so on. Certain amount of that money, it, it's, it's supposed to be used for roads, a certain percentage under a formula that the state legislature has established, comes back to local units of government. We have always received those monies and we use them, for example, we're using some of the monies this year to pay this, our city's portion of the Evergreen Road project, the, the part of it that's in Lathrow Village. We've used it for repaving of various city streets, it's where we, we use those fund balances to pay for those types of things. So, the state has said, guess what, we want an audit to make sure you people are doing what we, with that money, what, what you said you were gonna do, so...
And they're gonna pay us, right?
No.
Or is this an unfunded mandate?
It's an unfunded mandate. We get, we are privileged to do this on their behalf. Is there more to it than that, Pam?
No, there.
All right.
It's another, another audit.
This, this has been a, a, this has been a thing with audits for the last number of years, actually, where new standards, accounting standards are put in place that cause them to do, look at areas they may not have had to look at as, as much in the past. This one is a state mandate that says, for Act fifty-one funds, you have to have a separate audit.
They're doing it via intelligent defense.
Now, so what is your pleasure?
It can be expensed to the major, major local road fund.
For, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's still coming out of our funds, right?
I'm assuming that's what, yeah, you know, you're expensing it.
We're just, you know, discussing...
You're, you're getting out of control down there?
Well, we were just discussing filing suit.
We're getting out of...
Who?
Whack.
She likes my suit.
I like your suit. No, I was, Scott mentioned...
And we're gonna use that for the audit, how?
No, Scott just mentioned, there is a, there appears to be a provision that allows us to...
Expense it to the major local streets fund, we're not sure if that means they would reimburse additional monies for it, or if it's, it's still an unfunded mandate.
In fact, they've given us the money to begin with, they can use part of it for this, huh? All right. Council, we have to do this, so, I mean, we have to do the audit.
And then, right, and we really like them, we have to do that, too. We not only have to do this, we have to do this.
Yes, right.
To give them permission to...
Yes.
Do it to us, yes.
I'll make the motion to allow the interim city administrator to enter into this agreement with Plant Moran for upcoming Act fifty-one performance audit for fiscal year two thousand sixteen, seventeen.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just wanna thank them for the opportunity to do this.
Okay, so we should compose a thank you letter to the state of Michigan, if you would, please, for the opportunity to expend part of our money to do this audit on their behalf. So, be no additional discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. So, next is the... To invest, we need, this is what we alluded to earlier back in the report on the disbursement report, was the item in the resolution which allows for the City of Lathrow Village to invest in the Oakland County Investment Pool. Pam?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Every once in a while, I look at our investments through the city, and I like to re-update our contracts with the, uh, different places. Oakland County has a pool fund that has very attractive rates in their fund, and it is liquid, so we can take it back anytime we need to, we can put in as much as we want, they will even have different funds for us if we want, and I feel that this is a good way to make better interest on our money. And I would ask that Council would approve this, or adopt this.
Is there, are there limitations for investment in the kinds of things that they can invest that fund in, similar, as most other governmental units?
Right, but they have bigger pots of money where they can invest bigger and better and longer term.
They're gathering money in from all the various cities.
Correct.
And then investing it in a much bigger way, okay.
Well, you made good judgment in the last few years, so, it looks like it increased because of your recommendation, so I, I say, let's do it.
Suggested motion?
I make a motion to adopt the attached resolution that allows for investing with Oakland County Investment Pool.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is the city attorney seen this?
Yeah, I did review it, and I didn't see any issues with it. It looks very similar to previous, uh...
Right.
Version of, of the...
I think it's pretty much the same, yeah. Okay, any discussion?
The, the agreement itself is drafted by Oakland County.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
By Oakland County, for Oakland County, on our behalf. How's that? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. We have next the consideration of adopting a motion for an initiatory petition ballot language. This, those of you who will remember, a few months ago, a group came and presented their concerns about the fact that governmental units, cities, counties, state, the state of Michigan, can seize property that may have been, may have been used, or part of someone who's been engaged in illegal activities. And they want to, this particular ballot proposal would, say, change the City of, of Lathrow Village Charter to prohibit that practice, we would not be allowed to seize, and then liquidate the properties, right?
Yeah, and if...
Unless it's a truly a conviction involved.
True, it puts, it identifies parameters that the city can, can utilize, and it restricts the application of those funds to local and, um, street repair, maintenance and repair only.
Mm-hmm.
You're correct, Mayor, we did receive this, approximately fifteen months ago, the clerk received these petitions, however, they lacked the requisite ballot language on the petitions, also, they were not received timely enough to be placed on last November's ballot, so they will appear this next regular election, ironically enough, from the time they received, the state legislator has acted on this, and there, there is a, a civil forfeiture, new rate, new regulations at, at the state level, so it's kind of a move process, but we have proposed ballot language in a resolution this evening that would, as we did receive the petition, we're required to put it on the election, so, put it on the ballot, so there is proposed ballot language in the attached resolution that we're requesting Council approve this evening.
And I see that, I thought I saw the other day also, that introduced into the legislature is a new bill to prohibit seizures except in case of convictions.
Yeah, that's what I said, I think it's already, it's kind of been addressed at the state level.
That was my problem with the whole idea to begin with, is that we don't do seizures as, you know, in our community, and, and having had a practice of doing it, and it, to me, it was a state issue, but this group gathered the signatures, and they're entitled to have it put on the ballot, so... So is a motion to adopt the resolution?
Adopt the, um, I'll make the motion to adopt the attached resolution which allows for establishing Charter Amendment ballot proposal language.
Second.
What would happen if we said, no, we're not gonna approve the language?
Well, it's, the state law requires the governing body, the local governing body, to...
To...
Put some language on there, and, and there is no ballot language on the petition, so you can't say no, you, you can come up with different proposed language, but this was similar, this, this group submitted petitions to multiple communities, and some of them were timely filed, none of them, ironically enough, had the ballot language on them, so this language is similar to what other communities that made the ballot last year did, you know, so...
Okay, thank you.
Can we only need one signature?
No, no, there were multiple, I didn't, I think there were two hundred and fifty-six signatures that we received.
Two fifty-six, two fifty-eight, if I remember correctly.
How many?
Two fifty-six, two fifty-eight, something like that.
Two fifty-six, I thought it was in that neighborhood, yeah.
I don't just think it has one signature.
I just attached that so you could see what was received as far as the, the form of the ballot. It also had, which was somewhat strange, it had the proposed charter amendment on the backside of the actual petition itself. Usually, everything is contained on the front.
Mm-hmm.
A little bit different approach, but...
I have a comment, and I don't know how important this is, but did you see the letterhead?
What?
On this, look at the letterhead.
Jeff Mueller.
Who's our city administrator?
Oh, I mean, it's some old letter.
Jeff Mueller, Gloria is our city clerk, Mary is our recreation.
It was a...
Need to use the...
So we have some letterhead.
No, it was a, I used the form from previous, I'm sorry.
Jeff hasn't been here since I was twelve, right? Jeff hasn't been here since I was 12, right?
Well, I will give him a call and tell him he was mentioned in this meeting as a result. Okay.
So, I don't know if, you know...
Was there a second to that motion?
Yes.
Does it move the seconded? Is there any discussion?
Well, I do have, there's a typo in the resolution itself. I don't know how important that is. And I do have a question.
Maybe we can use it to validate the whole thing later.
No, that's just your sleep deprived city attorney, so please let me know, and I'll fix that.
Yeah, and the petition proposal talks about certain circumstances where property owners can seek return of forfeited property. Does that need, is that, does that need to be spelled out?
You mean in the ballot language?
Well, in the ballot language...
Yeah, the actual language. Property owner may seek the return of forfeited property, and the city must return, replace or pay compensation for such property under certain circumstances. If it's already been forfeited, I don't understand what circumstances they could request return of forfeited property.
The only thing that was in there is if it's not, if there's not a conviction of a criminal offense, then the city shall return, replace, and provide full compensation for any of the property damaged, defaced, or devalued as a result of the seizure. That's in their proposed charter amendment?
Well, then, I don't know if it's...
So, the only condition would be that, if they're not convicted. I mean, I could change it, it just...
Yeah, I mean, then it wouldn't be, wouldn't be forfeited property. It wouldn't be forfeited until there's a conviction, right?
But that's not how they're, they're proposed. I mean, I didn't write their proposed charter amendment.
Well, the point of why, you know, the background of why they started this effort is that agencies have been seizing property, as you well know, as you probably...
I well know.
That probably dealt with it in your law practice. They take it, and then some of those cases never actually go to trial.
Right, there's, there's a lot of times, there's not even a charge is filed.
And the property's gone. And good luck getting it back, so. And that's, that's kind of the background from where they're coming from, as to why they think these kind of proposals, this kind of language is needed.
But, but that's usually not done on a local level. It's usually the feds who do that.
No, that was our problem with the idea.
Yeah, but, yeah, I'm just not sure about this language, because in the first sentence, you talk about a criminal conviction as being required before forfeiture, and then later on, we talk about may seek return of forfeited property. Well, once there's a criminal conviction and it's been forfeited, I don't think there's any conditions where you can get it back.
Now, if you zoom in, page 125, and you read their proposed amendment, I just kind of followed along how, how they proposed, the language that they proposed, and doing them, like I said, it's...
I mean, it's all moot, but... Well, yeah, then I don't know if I wouldn't change the, the language in the second sentence to take out the word forfeited. A property owner may seek the return of property, and the city must return under certain circumstances. I'd just take out that sec, that forfeited, because it's not forfeited if they're gonna be asking for it back. Do you understand what I'm saying?
What do you think?
This one, take this forfeited out. Property owner may seek the return of property under certain circumstances. If we're calling it forfeited, they're not getting it back.
Okay, I mean, that's how they worded it, but I'll, we can, I can edit that, it's not a problem.
Okay.
And what was my other table?
Oh, that was on, in the resolution itself.
Okay.
At the bottom of page 123, last sentence on, on 123, that many is, should be may.
These are close.
Spell check wouldn't have caught that.
Well, it spelled right.
It spelled right, it's just not the right, it's just the wrong word. All right.
Can we table until we make some adjustments?
Make her in the second of the motion, would you still leave that in effect, or the changes made to the resolution or the ballot language?
Who's second?
I don't have a maker or a seconder yet.
I made it.
Yeah.
Did you make it, or you make a motion to table?
So, did you make it with the change?
No, she had a motion to table.
I made a motion to table until we correct all of the...
You definitely need new letterhead, so.
Correct the letterhead, correct the...
Well, the letterhead doesn't get sent off to the state. That's just for Counsel.
And additional clarification of the confusing paragraph that Maria just read.
Well, I think we agreed that I'm just gonna remove the word forfeited from the fifth line.
Fifth line is the maker and seconder of the motion. Don't have a problem with that.
Who's the seconder? You?
Yeah, who's second?
Yeah, so you wanna say with the correction?
Yes.
The only thing I would say not to, suggest not tabling it and just approve it subject to those changes is because there is a time requirement to get it submitted to Oakland County, get it submitted to the state, so it's approved and out of ballot.
By others, or...
They've been asking me for a couple of months, so I...
You just want the change made, right?
Yeah, that's it, so we could...
So, motion remains subject to the changes we have indicated.
Per the city lawyer.
City attorney. Okay.
Who's second? Oh, Dawn is second.
I second.
Okay.
The changes by city attorney.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the consideration of appointment of a member to the Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors. This is a proposal to appoint Mr. Vernon English, who is a resident with significant business and organizational experience, we feel would be a valuable addition to the board. Sean and I both met with him and talked at length about the work of the, of the DDA and what they're supposed to be doing, what their mission is, and talked about his experiences, and think he would be a good member of the board.
How many, how many board members are there on DDA?
Remember?
Between eight and 12? I don't know the exact number.
How many can there be?
Between eight and 12.
Ten point five?
Do we have a full complement?
Between eight and 12.
No, we do.
No, we, we have some seats that are vacant.
We have a couple of vacancies.
So, we still have a couple of, can someone give us, tell us how many vacancies we have?
Yeah. I think we have two.
I don't sit on that one, so I don't...
We have, we have two at the present time.
We have two. One is...
Is this one of them?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And then, there's one more still after this one, is that all?
Yes, we have had a couple of other applications. My personal view is that this is a resident, this is not a business stakeholder in the district, so I would think that that is, in terms of another one, we need, you know, another, should be probably a business representative from the district.
Well, you should look at the list. I mean, how many business owners are on the list, and how many residents are on the list? Because we see that we need a, we need some type of...
Yeah, it's almost equally split right now.
Well, if you've interviewed out for this one, but I would still like to see a list. I guess I'll have to get that, since nobody's here from the DDA. Can you get us a list?
Sure.
Of the current?
The clerk has the list, I think, as well.
And if they're a business owner or resident?
Yeah, we don't know.
Okay.
Well, I think there...
That's just for future.
Is it, is it there other applications that have been coming in, people who are interested?
Yes, yes, there are.
Do, do we wanna have them all come in before we make a decision?
Not really. No, frankly, we, you know, we got someone that's eager to serve and is well qualified. I think we, we, we could use that individual on the board now.
Well, I, but I mean, if there's no more, I know there's other residents who have expressed an interest in it, sent along or about to be sending along applications, if there aren't any other positions available for residents...
There are, there are.
There will be.
We don't have one resident that is on the DDA board. We have the president of Cernow, we have the mayor, now we have Pam.
Pam?
You would take the place, unless this is not updated.
Actually, I'm the treasurer on the DDA board.
Okay, so then, we don't, we have an opening, well, city administrator, Freeman Real Estate, strategic manager of Wallace Financial, commercial property owner. There is no...
There's no resident.
No resident on it at all.
Tom Bainbridge was on it before he passed away. He has been resident.
Normally, we, you know, most DDA's do not have more than one or two residents. We should have a resident, because there is a residential component within the district.
Absolutely.
So, it is, if there is, you're, you're really required to have a resident on board, so this one is a resident.
I would have to say that he's a viable resident. He is actually my neighbor down the street.
Well, I'm thrilled, I'm thrilled to have him. I just know that there are other residents who are also interested. As long as we're not precluding any other residents from serving, then I'm happy to...
Again, the board of directors makes the recommendation.
I will approve any, any resident that shows interest.
We approve, but we can, we can recommend other people to go to DDA, but it looks like it's a ten-member board of directors, okay? And it looks like it already, unless somebody is... It's our, it's already nine on here. So, this will be the 10th person. Are all these people still?
The Brock guy is temporarily.
Who is Brock?
I don't know. I'll find out and let you know. No, they're all still on there.
Yes, okay, so this is the 10th person. Okay, and it, it's ten members, not 12.
Yeah, okay.
So, okay.
Well, then, that's back to my question, then. This, this appointment precludes others, or can we expand the board? Can we...
Yeah, you, I mean, you could amend the bylaws to allow for more. I believe the state law allows between eight and 12. Looking at our bylaws, you're right, it does, we do say that the board should be composed of 10 members, the mayor and nine individuals appointed by the mayor. So, yeah, there could be an amendment to the bylaws. Again, this is, would be something that the DDA would do. They dictate their own bylaws. So, yeah, the DDA could amend, amend their bylaws to add additional members.
I think that's important, to get some citizens, a couple on there.
And while it is not official, because he doesn't occupy an official spot, we have a representative from the planning commission who acts as liaison to the DDA board, so that we have some communication mechanism back and forth between the planning commission and the DDA board. That's Ken.
Ken Martin?
Brown.
Keith.
Keith, that I said Ken, I'm sorry.
Okay, Keith's good. I like Keith. So, you, we need to vote on this, or does he need to...
Yeah, it requires the, it requires Counsel approval. If you don't want to approve him, why?
Make a motion to approve the appointment.
Yeah, he's a, he's a resident?
Yeah, he's a resident.
And you've met him? Ian knows him?
That is a very, very impressive guy.
Yeah. Isn't he also involved with the Kimmy Horn Festival as well, so?
I believe he is.
That really makes it...
He is second year in a row, so.
That's the, that's the key.
Do we really want to rock the boat on that?
That's the key, that's the key point.
I think this is a no-brainer.
How could I miss, how could I miss that? Do we have a motion?
Well, I just want him to be, I just, I have a question about him. I have a question about him before we...
Sure.
I think, I think when you become a res, resident on a board like this, you have, you can't be like an intimidated person. You can be good, but you also have to have, you know, the ability to speak up and all that other stuff. I'm trying to be nice, Sam.
Well, Mr. Bainbridge...
Does he have fire?
Mr. Bainbridge was a resident member of that board for a long time, and he was never reticent, ever, ever, ever reticent about speaking up and standing up for what he thought was right. And I did not come away with the impression that this man would be bashful about stating his views or his opinions, so.
He is a resident of the district?
And my last comment is, I agree with Maria that we can meet, I don't mind voting for Mr. English today, but that we, we meet, that they at least come to the meeting so that we can meet them, there has, so that there can be some relationship, tangible relationship.
That's a good idea, and I don't think he was, I don't think he was notifying...
I know.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, yeah, I know, yeah.
You what?
I said, I know who it is. I'm like, I'm fine with it. However you all want to do it, it is your pleasure.
No, I say, we'll go for it, but I do see in this a need, after what we've just gone through, to try and bridge.
Yeah, that's why I said we're gun shy. That's why I said we're gun shy.
Is there a motion?
That's, that's exactly...
I agree, totally.
Right, and, and I, you know, I do not know this man personally.
Yeah.
I know, and I know that there are other residents who are interested, so I, so I don't know if we wanna just take it one step further and make sure all the applications are in, and do some kind of comparison, or have everybody make sure they understand everybody who's, you know...
Well, I, like I said, we're gun shy. He's already gone through the application process, the interview process, second year with the Kimmy Horn Festival. I don't know what else this individual can do, other than for us to approve him.
Well, like I said, put him in, 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 you know, with others, just like how you were interested in making sure you had, you know, the police chief truly vetted. If there are other people who are interested, don't we need to know who the other people are?
Who are they?
Once we have them.
Once we have them, there are no applications.
Well, there were people here tonight who expressed an interest in, who said they, who already said they put their application in. I don't know where the application is, but...
We're at the end of the process to submit or reject.
Is that who the DDA recommended, and they went through the process? That's, that's a question.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, they went through the process, correct?
DDA went through the process?
Right. They're recommending to us who they want on the board, correct?
They recommended them to us, and...
Yeah, that's, under the ordinance, the director will make the recommendation for the member, and the city council will approve that recommendation, subject to the approval of the city council.
So, I would be okay with this recommendation, but the question is, how do we change the, amend the...
Counsel doesn't amend the bylaws. It would be the DDA that would amend their bylaws.
If you'd like them to consider that, just send that as a message.
So, the mayor sits on that board, he can relay that.
Relay that.
The only concern I have with putting residents on the DDA is that they're supposed to be, to be an interested party, you have to, you have to reside within the district. So, not necessarily the city, but within the DDA district, and so that's just...
Well, I can tell you that Mr. Bainbridge did not reside...
Okay, well, not, I mean, again, not, less than a majority of the members shall have an interest, but it does say, under our ordinance, that not less than one member shall be a resident of the downtown district, assuming the district has 100 or more persons residing within it.
We'd have to do a census to see if we're at 100 or not, but we're probably getting close to that, I would think, because all those condominiums down 11 Mile are in the district. The ones over here, if they're ever built, will not be in the district.
That's true.
They're outside of the district. There's no other properties included in the district.
I don't, not that I'm aware of any other properties, other than the condos, so...
This is a very tricky subject.
It's okay to be scared.
What?
It's a very tricky subject.
What is?
Having DDA members that don't reside in the district.
Well, if that's...
Or do or don't.
If that is a requirement.
Well, you, again, you can have, as long as a majority of the members of the body as a whole have, are interested, either they own property...
That's what I understood.
They, they work for a company that owns property, or they reside in the district. You can have non-interested parties on the DDA. You just, you're supposed to have one resident if you have more than 100. So, before, you know, Counsel puts four or five residents on there, now you're changing that, that balance of what your, what your majority is. Are they interested parties in the DDA? If you put a lot of residents that don't live in there, then no, they're not, so that wouldn't be appropriate. But one, one resident that's not interested in the DDA district is not, there's nothing wrong with that. But one resident that's not interested in the DDA district is not, there's nothing wrong with that. I'm just saying that you may, you may end up having to put another resident that does live there in that district.
And living, yeah. I'm not sure I understand the parameters of the DDA district versus the, you know, other residential district.
Well, the.
It is the, basically, the business frontage all along Southfield Road within our boundaries. Eleven Mile going from Southfield Road where.
Yeah, but I mean, there's nobody who lives, you know, on Southfield Road.
No, but there are people that live in.
There are people that live on Eleven Mile though.
And those condominiums are.
Those condominiums are all along there.
Because the district has to be contiguous. They can't jump around and have gaps in the district, so.
See, I just didn't know if it came back up.
Yeah, when the district was created, in order to include Michigan First in the district, all those residential properties along Eleven Mile had to be included. So to my knowledge, that's the only residential properties in there, and I don't know if there's more than a hundred people living in those properties or not.
I think that's doubtful at this point, but it's.
Well, then, that requirement would not be.
Right.
Okay.
Because we've made it, we made that count one time before to make sure of it.
So the motion's on the table.
Was there a motion?
I think I made it.
I know.
I did?
Was there a second?
Ian made it. Ian made it.
I was about to make it, I make a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Vernon English to the Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? There are none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the motion carries. Next is the consideration to adopt the Help America Vote Act Grant Agreement and for, and I guess it should be the purchase of four new tabulators. Adam Clark, this is your territory now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to let everyone know, we are going to receive what we did receive on Friday, our new voting machines. And the state provided three voting tabulators for the city at no cost through this grant. But I wanted extra, just in case one or, we never know, will go down. I always wanted to have extra on hand. I usually have two precincts downstairs, usually have two AV voting precincts up here as well. So each tabulator is an additional five thousand dollars. So thus you have the twenty thousand dollar invoice there for the voting tabulators. And we will use them for the November seventh election.
Right, great, great, great. So, make a motion? I make, I make a motion to adopt the Help American Vote Act Grant Agreement and purchase of four new tab, tabulators not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
Is it moved and seconded? Is there any discussion? I assume there's going to be a, you have a period to have to train all our workers on these moves and so on.
I have two wonderful precinct AV board workers here in the front row, so yes.
Right here.
They're even at a council meeting.
You'll take them, huh? You like those?
Yeah.
Have you, have you seen them, you ladies? No.
We'll take them anyway.
Right, yeah. And they're not connected to the internet in any way, right?
Not connected to the internet, but we're connected to Oakland County.
Okay, okay. This is a hard-wired, hard-wired connection, like through a cable?
Not through cable. We have a, the scanner.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
Does this use a paper ballot then?
We will have paper ballots, and our ballots will look a little different, but I'm going to talk about that later once I have them.
But I mean, are they fed through the machine like?
Just the same, the same process.
It's very similar to this process we've had before, but it's just new and up to date.
I think Councilman Ferguson is saying, is there a firewall?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out, if there's a firewall. Because there's.
That's all of our concerns, but yes.
Lot of discussions about these machines over the last year.
Company that designed it.
Net, net, net. Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Any seconded, right?
Yes, yes.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the motion carries. Item N, we'll consider a motion to approve administrative pay increases. We had talked about this in the session, it would be three percent.
Across the board.
For the administrative group, yes. Is there a make or such a motion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Because this budget is also going to include paying them to stay where you're at, right?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, so it's going to.
Physical position, or?
No, if I'm not mistaken, and just hear me out on this one. If I'm not mistaken, is that our last budget discussion prior to the release of Mr. Potter is the interim city manager, well, actually, at the time, treasurer, we still have treasurer, we get that, but.
Yeah.
You were going to stay where you were salary-wise, even though you weren't in the position of interim city manager, right? Wasn't that what it was the last time?
No, I believe the way it was written, the budget, was that the funds were allocated, but that the treasurer would have reverted back to her treasurer rate.
Right.
And was, he was proposing a three percent increase for all employees, with the exception of Ken Martin, who he was proposing a five percent.
Yeah, he was, but.
Yep.
But with all the discussion we have, I thought there was something else.
I mean, tell me if I'm wrong, but I'm just.
Well, that was my understanding, that it would go back down once I, but I, at the time, I was in training with the man. I was training the former city administrator for his position, and that's why it stayed where it was at that time. But my understanding is it was going to go back down.
I under, go ahead.
That's, that's what the discussions were about, prior to approving the budget.
Okay. Maybe there was one that I just sat out, because I can swear the whole uproar of everything that's been going on is because of.
The uproar was the, was the.
Well, there, there was.
Miscalculation of twenty-six percent, which.
The initial, in one of the initial proposed budgets, there was, there was, you're right, there was a miscalculation. And then it, it was the, before it was finally approved, it was corrected.
Right.
That the treasurer's salary would revert back to what it was prior to assuming the roles of the interim, and then what the council had allocated was a budgetary increase, I believe, of three percent across the board, subject to performance evaluation.
Right.
So that, that's the budget that was approved. I can't speak to what's actually taking place, but.
So the treasurer's increase would be three percent on the treasurer's salary, not three percent on the.
Right.
Whatever increase she gets.
That's correct.
So she'll get, is that right? Is that how, what you're saying?
That's how it was, that's how the budget was.
Not on the total.
Approved, no, not on the.
Salary.
That's right.
I'm just waiting for him, because maybe this is where you are. I did miss a meeting, so I'm not sure, was it corrected in that particular meeting, but I'm.
Oh, but the confusion's coming in is all the erroneous hearsay statements, which aren't accurate. What's accurate is what we approved in the budget and what the salaries will go to, the percentages, which is three percent across the board.
If you recall though, earlier in the budget process, the council did take action, to say leave Pam's salary at the higher rate.
Right.
Right.
Until she was training.
Well.
But that was for the fiscal year sixteen.
Right, pending, pending the hiring of a city manager.
Right.
And training, which happened.
Yes. Now we're back.
Now we're back to the.
Where she's again, in the interim, so. But the, yeah.
Yeah, I think we're, we're on the right page there.
So I think what, maybe just some clarification from council then, that her three percent would be on her treasurer base rate, but the additional funds that she's receiving for acting as interim would remain the same.
Additional amount was, was meant to take into account she was performing the additional duties of the city administrator during that period.
Which she's still doing, so she should still be.
Well, now she's doing it again, right. So just about the time we're going to remove her down, my.
Yeah, just, I want to make sure that it's clear that you're not, because that's part of the misinformation that's being circulated around, is that she's in fact getting a twenty-six percent pay raise, which is not, it's accurate. It's a three percent pay raise off her base, but she'll continue to receive the interim. I believe it's, is it fifteen hundred a month? Is that?
Yeah.
For acting that interim rate.
Careful, you go falling out that door.
So I think any motion that would, should probably specify that, just so that.
Oh, yeah.
There are no, again, no misinformation being circulated around.
So who ma, who's making the motion? Did you state it in that manner?
Not really, but. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the administrative pay increase to the base salary, right?
Of all effective positions.
Of all effective positions. That's it.
Yeah, that does it, because that's, you're really saying the base salary, her base salary is the treasurer's, right?
A second.
Let's move it and second it.
Did you want to specify the positions?
I could.
That are, that this applies to?
Yeah.
Perhaps that would be helpful.
I think, I think that would be an appropriate.
Okay, so let me break it down here.
You shouldn't have done that.
Pam, can you give us the positions that you recommended?
Let's see.
As the deputy treasurer, Erin Carlton. The city clerk, that tally. The assistant to the city administrator, Ken Martin. The DDA director, Sean Camer. And Parks and Rec Trina Vanderhark. And treasurer, Pamela Brachi.
What about Erin?
She did the first one.
You forgot city attorney.
Okay.
Okay.
Was there a second to that motion?
I did.
Yes.
Let's move it and second it. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the motion carries. The next item is a tabled item, which you received the update on the. Chief of Police Search earlier this evening, and the process, and we know where that is. So it'd be appropriate to leave this item tabled until the next meeting.
I have a question about it, though.
Okay.
Because when, our last meeting, we were supposed to have the committee that was already in place to do the, the, looking at, and I guess maybe I left like, I left our meeting this way in saying that it was going to be a committee of five that was going to look over the resumes and determine which ones to move forward. And from what I'm hearing, correctly if I'm wrong, that's not what's happened thus far, right?
It has not happened as of yet. We have had, I've had trouble getting two of the members to be able to meet, so I am sending them the resumes.
I, I get that, but there was also someone else that you were supposed to reach out to that you have not reached out to. From what I, the beginning of this meeting, you were saying someone that was supposed to be reached out to, that you did not.
The chief.
The resident, it was like a resident, it was going to be a resident that you have not.
Right, I only had one name for a resident so far, and they wanted me to check in to see if there were any police chiefs that were retired for the city.
Okay.
That's what I wasn't.
Is that the one I recommended?
You gave me one.
Yeah.
But my, I guess my point is, is that it's coming back to me, and it is, and I'm just trying to be very transparent. This is where we were before, where we specifically said that this is what needs to be done by the next meeting. And it wasn't done. So I'm, I'm to the point of, why even have it tabled anymore when the process keeps getting delayed and it's not being done correctly as we're requesting? Why have it, why have it tabled?
Because it needs to be completed. You don't, just because a process hasn't happened, you don't, you know, you don't strip the process away, you correct it. That's why we've, we've been going through this, is absolutely, after holding off and waiting to deal with correctly, evidently we need to fix the process.
I don't have, I don't even have the faith at this point of that we will, and this is, is me just trying, I mean, trying to be extremely just transparent in how I feel about this now. What's the point of taking the time to go through this, wasting people's time, interviewing people, wasting money that, when you have to send somebody through the process of background checks and things like that, when it still comes back down to the person that you wanted from the beginning?
So you're saying you don't trust the system?
Not in the least bit when it comes to this one, because we already did this, and to me, and it's no offense, I'm really not trying to be offensive, but this is one of the reasons why Mr. Potter is not here, because he did not do what we asked him to do. This is the reason why Mr. DiMaggio originally came because of the process not being done. And this is the reason why residents are getting some of these horrible letters and things that's being written and it, in the cities, in the uproar, just because this process became skewed from the very beginning. So why play the game anymore?
I disagree with you, but, okay. Snow ain't heck, but we got, we went through all of this to do, we should just make sure the system worked. We should put, we should put an emphasis on making sure that this is taken care of. We're too close to doing it the right way. And to just throw in the towel and not expect the system to work out, and we're going to do that with all, everything else that.
It's not with everyone else, it's with this particular situation.
But you said, we're setting a precedent.
We're short people, we need to hire people.
We're setting, okay, so.
We've set a precedent by putting out a process. We set a precedent by saying, this is what we want you to do by this particular date, and this is the second time that it has not happened. And it's just no, I mean, what, what's the point? I really, I don't understand it, and I mean, I'm just, I'm saying this from my heart of hearts, and you don't, no one has to agree with me on this one, but the fact is, this is something that I've been pondering and struggling with for quite a while now.
Well, what's the timeline to interview all these applicants? Do you have any idea?
We're not going to interview all of them. The idea is to.
No, I mean, the five, we narrow it to five.
Narrow it down to five.
But we still have to send the twenty-six over to Southfield and Berkeley or whoever.
And again, it's not, the council is not going to interview any of these applicants.
Right, right.
So just so we're clear, that's.
No, we have nothing to. We're just going to vote, I get it, I totally get that, yeah. So what is the process?
So Pam, what is your process? Are you, what is your timeline? What is, how do you, and I understand that a lot has been put on you in the last month, and that this is something that's new to you, so maybe we should talk about a timeline or think about.
I understand your explanation. I totally understand that. I mean, the whole thing started on April seventeen.
No, and I'm saying, the last time we were in a meeting, we asked for a timeline, and we keep going back to a new timeline. And then it's something, and I just don't, I think at some point, we just have to put a line in the sand or something.
Are you implying that you want to take it off the table?
You know, it is, I just think that, just go through the process and see what happens, that's all. Do you understand what I'm saying at all? Do I sound?
Yes. I, I would like, it wasn't a month ago, that was just July tenth, when I, in my notes, I have the police chief update, was there were twenty-five apps, including the active police chief. And you all agree that there'd be a task force of five to help narrow the field, and that would include police to help and interview a citizen, the mayor, and a council member. So that was just July tenth, so.
But it was supposed to be for the next meeting.
Okay.
We were supposed to have the committee together, not to have it all finished, the committee was supposed to be together by the next meeting. You're right.
I also wouldn't, this is just my personal opinion.
I appreciate.
But the ugly letters are flying around. I would not let them influence me whatsoever in what I'm thinking or doing.
I'm the only person up here with skin in the game with this one, you know? I'm still taking the brunts and the blows for it. So I mean, my point is that of all these things that have been happening, and we come back to the same place where we were, that's the part, let's just be, you know, transparent with it, that this is, we're, it's taking too long. And then to be in the same situation where the process was not followed us.
We, I want this, that it's taking. We, we, I want this, that is taking too long.
Am I chopped liver?
What did I do now?
I'm, I'm, yeah.
Oh, I forgot, yeah, he has skin in the game. I'm totally, I'm like, what?
But, but in answer to your question about chopped liver.
What were you gonna say, I'm sorry?
Yeah, just, you can't, I wouldn't think it'd be fair for the applicants to put out a process, this is our process for doing a search.
Yeah.
You've applied, you're in the pool, you know, we're going through the process, and then pull the plug on all that, that's not fair to them. And you applied for a job, especially a high-level position, you expect that the process will play out, and yeah, sometimes it can take a long time.
Well, I would, I would suggest that we do get the process into high gear. And that means we have to get these people committed to help us do this, and do it quickly. And then, I think we should, I understand, I understand why it's been difficult for you to do that in that kind of timeframe, these last couple of weeks, to get it all done, because you've got all this other stuff going on too, but, you know, we, we'll have to help you do that, if that's what it takes. But we, we need to, I would say by our next regular meeting, be in a position where we're at least down to where we've got that final five selected, and they're being checked out or interviewed by then, and if not, and preferably having a recommendation by our next meeting, if we can.
What about, what about realistically, because the next meeting is in, in two weeks?
No.
No, that's a study.
It's a study.
So you're talking about, you're talking about thirty days, because you have to consider the availability of whoever we want to interview and, and all of that, so you have to go through the apps, so I think that at least by the next meeting.
Tell the, tell the Southfield chief we're not gonna pay our, we're not gonna pay the dispatch fee.
Rather than us, well, tell us what you think.
It wasn't about, it wasn't about doing the interviews and doing the app, it was simply just putting the five people together on a commi- on the committee.
Yeah.
That was all.
Okay, but I, I just want Pam to tell
That was all I was saying, that's what, I mean.
Yeah.
And
But you can't kill the, a process.
Can you do that?
Yes.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. So
So we're looking at Southfield.
We'll, we'll leave this on the table, but with those, those additional instructions?
I'm
Not a candidate necessarily.
That works for me.
You don't know what I don't wanna give her.
Can you do that?
Excuse me?
By the next meeting, the things we talked about?
Yes, I will have everything in place.
Do we need to do anything else with this? Because it's already tabled?
It's already tabled, you can move on to the next.
Move on then, the next is departmental reports.
Yeah, I got it. I got too many, no, I have too many departmental report.
You have too many?
Yes.
How'd you get so many?
I don't know.
Do we have departments we don't even know exist? You've received copies of the Lathir Village Police Department Report, Building Department, DDA, Recreation Department, Planning Commission, I think there was the
I got them all, I got them all.
And the City Council Communication, whatever that is.
Okay. I have a couple of questions on it.
Okay.
Okay, I just noticed that there was a couple of animal bites, one was unusual, long, a chain that was too long, and someone got bit.
Yeah, that, what, who would page that one on? That case is actually
One forty-two.
Electronic one forty-two, or paper one?
Paper.
Rose, Lathir kind of rose.
Is that in the police report?
Yeah, that's six nineteen, case seventeen dash two three seven two, that animal owner was in court last Friday, they did plead guilty to having a dangerous animal. The specifics of that case, it was a, it was actually a pretty small dog. About that big.
Ankle biter.
Yeah.
Small dog.
An ankle biter.
And he didn't bite an ankle.
The leash, the leash that it was on was positioned in the front yard, so that it allowed the dog to get onto the sidewalk, and individuals walking by, and the dog ran out and kind of scratched, bit the, initially thought they just scratched it, but then later found some teeth marks, so nanos all of the, on its shots, and that's, for that case was
So what happened to it?
The anal? Nothing.
The owner?
Was the owner fined or anything?
Yeah, the owner was fined, put on probation. I believe Judge Nance ordered him to do community service, twenty-four hours of community service.
Pick up doggy doo-doo or whatever.
She didn't specify what he has to do, but he, yeah, he is required to pay fines and costs, and he's going to be on probation for a period of time.
Okay.
And so, yeah, I was just concerned, because our residents have been so concerned, and it's a dog at large, it's a German shepherd at large, I guess, that isn't something I know that you know about, but.
Yeah, this was not a German shepherd, it was very small.
It's the smallest German shepherd you've ever seen.
No, no, I'm saying, this, this, this animal bite that we got was
Now, this one specifically says a German shepherd.
Well, the animal bite was a small dog.
Oh, no, I moved to another one, I said another, another, I guess I didn't say a lot of another.
There's a German shepherd bite?
Yeah, no, he didn't bite, but it was a loose one, loose German shepherd, so anyway, I know you don't know the answer to that, I guess, these dog concerns.
Well, a German shepherd attacked it.
Attacked her dog, she was, a loose German shepherd had attacked her dog, but then they went out and couldn't find.
Sunnybrook and Bloomfield.
I just want to be sure that we are, because it's such a huge issue with our residents, and, and with me, because I
Well, the one you're talking about is on page one forty-four. Animals at Large.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that, make sure we were staying on the dogs and stuff. And then I have one more. We can go. I noticed on Sean's DDA that he says that there is, two seven four eleven, Southfield would be at New Coney Island restaurant.
Yes.
Is that right across the street?
Right across the street.
Okay.
Is it really?
Yes.
Okay.
And somewhere
Do they have a liquor license?
No.
Honey Tree is, Honey Tree is supposedly going for a liquor license, is that right? Honey Tree?
I heard they were going to, I don't
Has, has applied for class C.
I think they have applied, yeah.
Yeah, and there's a spa opening, but what I really wanted to bring out, Pam, was, oh, and it looks like there's a ribbon cutting on August fourth for a new State Farm office.
What's the address?
Two eight eight three one Southfield, August fourth at four o'clock.
Thank you.
But it says that the DDA has hired
Two eight three one seven, sorry.
It says what?
It's two eight three one seven is the ribbon cutting?
Oh, I'm sorry, two eight three one seven Southfield Road.
Okay.
Oh, and the other place is a potential coffee shop, but and all that, I was, I would
Yeah, the one, the problem with the coffee shop, as I understand, is they, they want to include a drive-through, so they've got to, they're carefully, like, trying to look at the plans, see if they can figure out a way to do that.
Where is this address, two eight eight three one?
It'll be down here where the tubs used to be.
Used to be where the K Salon is, that says
Yeah, right next to Kabak Kabak, right?
Right.
Or is that?
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Fireback tubs.
Oh, okay, it's kind of open.
I was confused, I was like
But it says that the DDA has approved hiring two employees to help with community events.
Two, two interns or two employees?
Hard-time employees.
Hard-time.
So I just wanted to make sure, I didn't know that, that you were aware, and we were talking earlier about who would, who would be running the DDA events to
It's to help do those events as well as to do some of the cleanup and so on around the district that needs to be done from time to time.
So are they doing the events or assisting the
They'll do both.
DDA person?
Mm-hmm.
They'll be setting up, helping set up, helping take down, things like that.
All right.
I mean, I didn't know, did you know that? DDA had hired a couple of people?
No.
Has he hired them? He was, he was looking for them, I know.
I think he has hired them.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's a good thing, because it gets busy, especially now we're, alcohol, food.
We actually did this last year, we used some part-timers that we used to go through and help clean up the alleyways and things like that in the district.
Okay.
So, work that would not have been done otherwise.
Okay. That's off, Trina, you have something for us? You're doing a good job.
Thank you.
So, anything new?
Stretch those legs.
You think it's Southfield?
Kimmy Horn Festival, that's gonna be, I wasn't here last year, but her and I work on it every day, well, three days out of the week last, last week, so it's gonna be good this year, it's gonna be a two-day event this year.
Wow, and it's not gonna rain?
It's not gonna rain, it's gonna be nice.
Yes.
Um, and then on Friday, we got all the new fitness equipment downstairs.
Oh.
Yeah.
So it will be ready to rock and roll by Thursday, once, I'm gonna put some new paint on the walls, make it look nice.
Cool.
So, yeah, definitely come check it out, it's good stuff.
When is it open, the fitness center?
Oh, you can use it now, but
What, eight hours?
Eight, four thirty.
Eight to four.
Oh, we're open.
It closes at four thirty.
I know, it's something I want to look into. Hopefully this winter, we can maybe get somebody part-time that can stay at least to like seven, seven thirty, so
Yeah, workers, we need to.
Yeah, we've, we've done that in the past, you know, that, that we had some
Yeah, to make it worthwhile, I think we definitely need to keep it open.
Yeah, I agree.
In the evenings.
Yeah.
If it's, maybe not every, every night, but three nights a week or something.
Or early mornings.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Are we still pursuing pickleball sometime?
Yes, I'm actually waiting for one more bid to come in, for somebody to come in and put the surface down.
All right.
That's great.
So, yeah.
Did you start those outdoor exercise? You know, you're gonna have
Oh, the equipment? I just got a quote last week, it came in at fourteen, like, seven, so
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just looking.
No, I thought you were gonna have yoga classes.
Oh, yeah, yoga's out, Monday and Wednesdays.
She's having that already.
Yeah, yoga in the park's been going on.
Yeah.
What time?
Eight, eight in the morning.
In the morning, on Wednesdays?
Wednesdays and Saturdays.
Okay.
Yeah.
You been going?
No.
He leads it. So.
Well, I, I, I was considering until I saw some of them afterwards, and they were totally dispensed, and I said, I don't need that, so I
Oh, one last thing if I can say, our numbers for attendance for the farmer market has been real low, so on Thursday, I went and toured a bunch of them. Like Fenton and a few others, and everybody's in the same boat. We're trying to figure out how to revamp it a little bit, farmers markets are, I hate to say it, but it's kind of a thing in the past right now, unless you are Easter Market, Royal Oak, they're a dime a dozen right now, so I just had a long conversation with two of my big farmers, they're ready to pull out, because we aren't supporting them, so Lathir Village, come to a farmer's market. So, yeah, I think maybe last Wednesday, we maybe had sixty visitors.
Yeah.
It makes for a long day.
Yeah.
Um, not for just me, but I feel terrible for these vendors that aren't selling products, so come out, support your local vendors, everything is pretty much Michigan-made, except for the oranges that come. But seriously, come support your farmer's market, it's a, it's a great thing we have here.
Yeah, I agree. Birmingham's struggling too.
They are.
Every Sunday you go, it's like, jeez.
Yeah, I went to Melford, Melford, and they had nine, nine people visiting and about twenty-eight vendors.
Wow. And then so many people are growing their own
That is crazy, yeah.
In their backyard.
Yeah, that would be
Yeah, well
Oh, even my brother and I
The farmer I talked to today said that Meyer just put up a big two-hundred-acre greenhouse where they're just gonna start growing their own produce.
Wow.
So these farmers can't keep up with the Meyers in the world, so
Yeah.
It's unfortunate.
Yeah, it's terrible. Wow, thank you.
So boycott Meyers? Is that the other message? I just wanted to, I want to make sure what you're
The mayor said that, not the council.
We didn't say it either, yeah.
Well, I was about to, because every time I go there, there's never a cashier open.
Well, it's all, it's all self-serve now.
They stop all when they're closed.
It's self-serve.
Yeah, except when they're closed, right? The, was there a motion? To accept the departmental reports?
Not yet.
So moved.
Second.
With movement seconded, accept the departmental reports? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. City Administrator, do you have any quick, you have a communication in the packet?
Yes, I have a communication here that as everybody has gotten a postcard in the mail last week, our garbage, our trash day is changing to Mondays, starting August fourteenth, they are gonna give you a pickup on August eleventh, and then they are gonna turn around and give you another pickup on August fourteenth, so you will have a double pickup that Friday and that Saturday, or Monday, I'm sorry. Yep, and then brush tipping is still gonna be Fridays for right now, it will be changing to the Mondays, starting August fourteenth, so your brush tipping will be the same day as your trash pickup, so those are two good things. We are gonna be putting out signs to remind people this week, they will be at all the entrances of the city, they will be a sign there, letting you know that when the trash day is changing, just to, when you're coming into the city, you'll see it. And then your recycle carts that everybody's gonna be getting, that are gonna be dropped off at your houses, those will be coming out the first two weeks of September, so look for those to be out, and you will put everything in one recycled bin, and they will separate it when it gets to the
Oh, the recyclables.
Oh, recyclables, yep.
And is it, do you know, is it possible to get more than one?
I do not know, like, they're giving you the first one for free, so
They're huge.
And they're pretty big.
They're big.
They're huge.
They are in our lobby, if you want to
You saw it, right, lobby.
I know, but I, you know, we
I use three of the small ones now, and I'm sure it's more than bigger than that.
Okay, well, I'll try it, but you know, I'm, I'm already thinking, I mean, you know.
You need two or three?
Yeah.
Well, if that happens, we will check into a second one.
Okay, well, 'cause now you can buy, you can get more bins now, yeah.
Do you have to use the new bins, or can we continue using the old ones?
Ah, good question. I'm sure the answer is
I'm sure the answer is
No.
They would prefer you to use the new ones, because the truck will be able to just pick those up and lift them and put them into the recycle truck.
Yeah, it's another way of putting people out of work.
They would prefer you use those, there probably is going to be some people that will not be using those, but they are preferring that you use the new ones that will
Yeah, there's a mechanism on that truck, you just, they pull up, and they just roll it, and just flip it up, that's it.
Can we recycle those bins?
Yes.
You can recycle your own
You can recycle your own recycle bins, or have a
Or use them for something else.
Container garden. You can. Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Oh, oh, well, I'm not going to say that.
Did we accept the reports? Did we vote? Okay.
We did.
Yes.
That's right, that's right, we're doing the city administration.
Yes.